I called to order this regular. All right, I'll try again. I called to order this regular meeting of the Campbell City Council and the successor agency this Tuesday, September 3rd. Deputy City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Present.
Councilmember Fertado.
Here.
Councilmember Scazola.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Landry.
Present. And I'd like to call up Lisa Fagan to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up. And anybody who wants to come with you, come on up, up to the podium right here. And the hit the little microphone on the red ring or there's a little mic in front of it. There we go. We'd like to leave this. Ready?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And stay there, please. Um, I'm gonna come down. I have a certificate to give you for the reading the pledge, but I'd also like to just now go into special proclamations and presentations. And this is a proclamation declaring the month of September 2024 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Campbell. September is National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. During this time, we reaffirm our commitment to supporting organizations whose mission is to support funding research towards cancer prevention. Coa Strong Childhood Cancer Prevention Organization's mission is the primary prev- prev- prevention, I'm sorry, of childhood cancer through funding research and implementing a multi-system approach towards early detection for screenings, prevention through immunization, and genetic testing. Coa Strong's dedication to funding critical research towards understanding causes and prevention of childhood cancer also honors the spirit, life, love, and memory of Coa Fagan. In 2020, after the sudden passing of Kaya Fagan, the Campbell Police Department welcomed K-9 Coa as part of their team in honor of Coa's passion for law enforcement and the Campbell Police Department. Today, I'd like to present with to you this proclamation to Lisa Fagan and the Coa Strong Childhood Cancer Prevention in honor of your son and the many others affected by childhood cancer. And I'm gonna come down and give you a proclamation here and your certificate and do you have a camera ready? And you will take a picture of this for me. Wanna be in the picture or part of the picture or taking the picture? Okay, you can give Brian your camera. So first, I want to give you a certificate for reading the pledge. There you go. And this is the proclamation. I, as mayor of city Campbell on this day, September 24th, 2024, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Campbell. Encourage all supporters to oppose strong releases. Thank you very much. Thank you both. There you go. I'm gonna get my exercise today. Next on our agenda is a proclamation declaring the month of September to be National Service Dog Month of the city of Campbell. September is also the National Service Dog Month and offers, I'm choking tonight, honors the hard work and life-changing impact service dogs make for people with disabilities every day. This month is a time devoted to showing appreciation and raising awareness for the extraordinary work service dogs do every day for those of them in their care. K-9 Companions created the concept of service dogs who assist people with physical disabilities in 1975. These dogs are trained specifically as working dogs rather than pets and require years of training to do their job. Today, I would like to present this proclamation to the K-9 Companions and declare the month of September National Service Dog Month. And I have Elizabeth Menkens here and V T also. If you wanna come up here to the podium. And would you like to introduce your, who you have with you?
Basically, this is Sorbay. She's the seventh puppy that we've raised for K-9 Companions. And so far, she's the one of the most challenging, but we never know who's going to graduate and who's going to have what we call a change of career until probably seven months or more from now. She's just 10 months old now.
And then you come down. So I, Susan Landry, Mayor of city Campbell, on the spur of September 2024, proclaim September 2024 National Service Dog Month in recognition of service dogs and the adults and children with disabilities in our community who lead their independent lives because of their assistance. Thank you both of you. Uh, next on the agenda is communications and petitions, which I have none. And then there's oral requests. This is the portion of the meeting reserved for people wishing to address the city council on any item that is not on the agenda. If you wish to speak for, under oral request, please come forward at this time. This is for an item not on the agenda. A not on the agenda, right? Okay, come on up. And if you'd like to state your name.
Hi there. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to make one mention. You had the service dog for physical handicaps. Well, my name is Sandra Williams, and I'm speaking regarding emotional dogs. Uh, my husband was a football coach for 43 years, and then after retirement, took a spill off our grandson's razor scooter and had brain damage, bleeding on the brain, swelling of the brain, and he needs our little dog, which is an emotional dog. So I just wanna let you know that it's not just service dogs. It's also emotional dogs. And I just wanna make sure that that's noted in the agenda, that it's a very important issue, which I never believed I'd have to deal with. And our whole family, our four children, thank you for caring for me.
Very much. And you do know about our therapy dog that we have?
Your therapy?
The Chief of Police is over there. We have a therapy dog. We have two dogs that are officers, and Morgan is a therapy dog.
Yes, I'm very proud of them, and I do know about that.
Okay.
Thirty-five years, and I'm retired law enforcement.
Okay.
I do appreciate all the work you do with the dogs. We definitely need them emotionally and for physical handicaps.
Thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
Uh, next on it is, the agenda is council announcements. I wanna give the community an update on state legislation that has recently passed this weekend. This legislation allows for a local funding expansion to cities like ours. The county of Santa Clara successfully sought authorization to do so previously, but did not include extending the funding expansion to cities. The legislation that the city of Campbell sought has cleared the state legislator and is now headed to the governor for signature. The city of Campbell encourages all eligible residents to participate in the upcoming November 5th municipal election where two city council members will be selected and the decision rendered on whether to adopt Measure K, the city's local funding and community service measure. Please join me on Wednesday, September 18th, for the annual State of the City address. I will be discussing the current state of the city, recent accomplishments, measure O updates, and the city's sustainability efforts. The State of the City address will be held at the banquet, Orchard City Banquet Hall. Doors open at 6:30 with the event beginning promptly at 7:00. And we do ask for an RSVP if possible to Mayor State of the City at cityofcampbell.com. And it's on the screen over there. And would you please RSVP by Wednesday, September 11? And what isn't on our flyers, we will be giving away a special gift to everybody. The Fourteenth Annual Caregivers Count Conference. The Caregivers Count Conference offers a comprehensive educational series designed to support family caregivers. The 2024 conference will feature three virtual sessions from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on September 14th, 21st, and 28th, and one in-person session on October 5th at the Campbell Community Center. Topics are creating a safe home for your loved ones, end-of-life support, navigating trauma and self-care and resiliency. All sessions are free by pre-registering at caregiverscount.net. Coa Strong Childhood Cancer Awareness. Our community relies behind childhood cancer prevention. On Sunday of this week, September 8th, at 10:00 a.m., there will be a Coa Strong Kindness Rock Garden dedicated at Mayaneth Orme Park. The rock garden is a lasting art display to spread awareness, reflection, and support all who discover it. You can bring your own painted rock or paint one at the dedication event. There will be freshments, crafts, and hula dancing. Back to school means sharing the road. As the school year begins again this fall, please remember to keep an eye out for young students who are walking or bicycling to school. Pay attention to the school zones, avoid distractions, stay alert, take extra precautions when you're behind or approaching a school bus, and be prepared for more traffic and for more motorists making sudden stops. If you would like to do your part to help improve child safe as a volunteer at your children's school, help make our schools safe places to walk and bike. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar will be taken as one motion unless an item is pulled. Is there any council member staffs or member of the public who would like to pull an item from consent? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar items three through.
Eleven. Second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado.
Aye.
Councilmember Scazola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye. That motion passes. Uh, next is public hearing and introduction of ordinances, which we have none tonight. Uh, now, as the successor, successor agency's new business, we will be discussing item 12, the Campbell Technology Park Deposition and Development Agreement. And we have our community development director, Rob Eastwood, presenting.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Landry, council members. Uh, we'll keep my presentation short. Uh, so tonight, uh, is, uh, an agreement concerning the Campbell Tech Park. Uh, this will settle a dispute between the city and the applicant regarding a builder's remedy application. Reminder, Campbell only did receive one builder's remedy application.
I'm sorry, but I'm having a hard time hearing you. Is, uh, is Ryan listening? Should I turn the volume up? Yeah, and our speaker's not looking.
Maybe try again.
A little louder? Yeah.
Okay. Uh, this will settle a dispute between the city and the owners of the tech park regarding a builder's remedy application. Campbell did only receive one builder's remedy application. I know many of our sister cities received more. Um, but this is the only one builder's remedy application we did receive. Uh, much of the dispute is regarding not if residential development should occur at the tech park. It's rather the density of development proposed. Council may remember, in our Housing Element General Plan, we proposed a higher density of development on the Campbell Tech Park as a housing opportunity site. Builder's remedy application we did receive is a lower density, namely in the townhome range. Over the past several months, myself, city attorney, city manager, Brian Leventhal, I have met with Campbell Tech Park owners to talk about ways to resolve the dispute between the residential density. Uh, the resolution we have come to is a payment, uh, from the Campbell Tech Park representatives into the city's housing fund. Uh, the amount that's before you today is $2.5 million, and it's based on a methodology we looked at that roughly aligns with how we calculate inclusionary housing fees. Uh, and again, it's more proportionally addresses, uh, less housing and less affordable housing that will be developed at the site. Uh, with that, uh, we advise the council to, uh, move forward with the amendments to the development agreement that will result in the payment of $2.5 million in the city's housing fund, of which 25% would be received at the time of any approvals, and 75% would be received at the time of initial building permits issued, uh, for the project. The action before you tonight does not bind the city to approve or deny the actual project. That will come separately before you. You would evaluate it based on its merits and its conformance with the general plan. However, uh, payment of the funds discussed does require approval of the project. With that, I would like to address your attention to a desk item, very minor edits to the resolution regarding the acreage of the sites and terminology, uh, that's used in the resolution. Under that, myself, city attorney Selman, and city manager Brian Leventhal are open for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any council questions? Seeing none questions, I'm gonna fight the public. I have some speaker cards here. If anybody else would like to speak, come forward and fill out a card and give it to Kristen here at the city clerk. So first part I have is Terry Hines.
Terry Hines, 2276 Central Park Drive, Campbell, California, District 1. Honorable Mayor and council members, thank you very much. City has established a proposed agreement with the owner for redevelopment of the Campbell Technology Park. As a District 1, I've been, I've been very disappointed to see this large tract completely underutilized. I strongly encourage the city council to accept staff's recommendation. This will bring revenue to the city, great utilization with 290-plus housing units and substantial funding for the city's housing assistance fund. As a bicyclist in this district area of Campbell Village, it is difficult and dangerous to get to popular bicycling areas like Los Caddo's Creek. Please don't assume the bike lanes on Union and Camden is, are safe, that one, one being only two feet wide with a button, with a gutter pan, and the latter being between freeway lanes. Troublesome. I encourage the city to include bike access to the proposed development. Vehicle access to the area is limited to one narrow road heavily congested with businesses on the street. I would encourage the city to establish a second vehicle access to the area. Easing vehicle access and having bicycle opportunities should both improve the advantages of living in the proposed development. Thank you for your personal time and dedication to building a better Campbell. Thank you.
Thank you. And next I have Michael. Please come up. Take your time.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Uh, my name is Michael Garrity. I'm the president of the Board for Paseo de Palomas Incorporated. Paseo de Palomas Incorporated is a Class C corporation. Paseo de Palomas owns a mobile home park that is abutted to the southwest property line of Campbell Tech Park. On our side of the property mine, we have a rec hall, a spa, swimming pool, picnic area, bocce ball court, putting, and a putting green. From there to the northern boundary, we have 16 homes. It is clear there are only two choices to make. The preference we have is for the 291 units. Uh, the reason we picked these units, uh, or this proposal, is the 34 two-story single-family homes will be built on the southwest property line of the Tech Parts property, which will abut us. So we will have, uh, mobile homes. You'll have two stories, and then you'll go up to three-story and four-story as you go towards the freeway. Uh, this will give us more privacy and less construction noise. Guys, the project is smaller, and there will be less build-out time, maybe two to three years. The demolition in this project is almost moot because it doesn't make any difference. We demolished the park for 600 units.
If you can just wrap up.
Okay. Anyway, I've lived in that park for 35 years, went through the demolition of Winchester Drive-In, the building of the Tech Park, and, uh, McClinty Avenue, Union Avenue, Curtner, and Baskin were a nightmare. We lived through a symphony of construction noise and the aroma of diesel fuel, roofing tar, dust, and hot as dusts. That was for two years. Uh, I wanna thank, well, okay, well, I wanna thank you for your time. Remember, Paseo de Palomas pays taxes to Campbell, and we learn. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. I have a Pat. Uh, please hold your props. We have the next speaker. Pat? It's fine. It's on.
Do you want me to press this?
No, it's good.
Um, I'm Pat Tinto. I'm actually the financial officer for Paseo de Palomas. Uh, I just wanted to remind people that we are a collective of 106 homes. They're individual. Uh, we're senior 55 to, some of us have reached 95 and almost 100. Uh, we've been in existence since 1967, um, as a co-op since 1984. We pay county taxes and we pay city of Campbell taxes. For some of our longer-term residents, the city tax actually makes up almost a third of the taxes they pay. Uh, we are frugal. We don't cost the city hardly anything because we pay all our own utilities, our own roads, water, gas, you name it. We do rely on the city for police, for libraries, and for the fire departments. But basically, we see ourselves as residential. We've developed, we've watched the development going from the orchards along Union into two, two-story and one-to-three-story condominium and, and apartment building. Uh, one of our residents, because the families that are in those buildings, worked with the city to put in a family park. It's a walk-in park, a Savodovich family park. Mrs. Savodovich lived in our park, as did her husband, early on, after they sold their farm and their orchards. So we're very concerned about residential quality living, and we feel that the proposed plan of 290 units stays with that. We know you need housing, and you need housing that's probably going to be much smaller. People aren't gonna have the nice big ones that some of us came from, and we've all sized down basically to live at the sale. But we really feel that the idea of residential, of single-family houses, large lots, that's really a thing of the past. And we need to redefine residential and include some of the multi-story, but not the high-density. I'm from the 60s, and I've seen too many of those high-density buildings get really bad, and many cities are tearing them down. The minute you've sat people in, so we as a, personally, I support the lower-density project, and as a board member, I represent 106 residents. Actually, there's about 130, 106 homes that also support that project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's, we have another speaker, Chris.
Hi, I'm Chris Coggins. I live at Paseo de Palomas Senior Mobile Home Park. Uh, speaking for myself and the community, we appreciate the time and effort, work that the mayor, the council, and staff do. You've made Campbell a great city. Thank you. Uh, I worked as an economic development officer for the city of San Jose and a real estate appraiser before that. There's many reasons why we became Silicon Valley, and one of them is having light industrial space for startups like Campbell Industrial Park. Eliminating that may kill the goose that laid the golden egg, but you guys have already made your decision. You're turning it into residential. We understand. The state is forcing this. Typically, residential uses bring the highest return to property owners, but there's a balance between demand and density. The owners have done studies and found that the optimal size and density is 290 units. That is the highest and best use. This makes sense since the site is not within walking distance to light rail downtown and a variety of retail. All the residents will depend on cars. Uh, attempting to put place high-density residential in an area that's not suited for it is like putting a square peg in a round hole. Uh, it's understandable how you may hope to meet the state of California's mandate for development of affordable housing by putting it in an industrial area, but high-density housing would only succeed if the proper infrastructure is in proximity of the development. This is not a field of dreams in which you can build it and they will come. The developer did the proper studies and understands what the market will bear. So I'm recommending you build the 290 units and don't try to build a higher density. It's the wrong place at the wrong time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers from the public? Come on up.
Good evening again, Mayor, Madam Mayor, and city council members.
Can you speak up a little? We're having a speaker. The, it's the green ring you're talking into. The green ring, you're talking into that.
Got it. What a difference. What a difference. Don't have me on timer yet. Okay. Madam Mayor, once again, good evening and to you, city council members. I'm sorry to be late on the agenda. I wanted to hear what. Other people said regarding item twelve, Campbell Technology Park. I'm been a senior advocate since I retired after thirty-five years in law enforcement. And I think you need, excuse me, I hope that you will. Listen to seniors that spoke to. Your representatives. Last time we were on the agenda. Because we're completely behind the owner and his developer to. Only do two hundred and ninety homes on this, on his land. We think that's absolutely appropriate. You don't want to have big development. Leaning over the park as far as looking in their backyard and their homes. These seniors moved to this park for the golden years. And to make a huge development there is completely outrageous. I mean, you all have grandparents and parents that you're looking after. And they don't need these last years of their life with a big development there. So we're completely behind the. Owner and the developer on this project. And we want to make it crystal clear because there's a hundred and six homes there and you heard a lot of residents that some of them have to have. Twenty-four-hour care. And you want to make their life miserable. This is supposed to be the golden years and I, I can't thank you enough for listening to me. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, last call on any speakers. All right, I see none. I'll bring it back to council for discussion or a motion. Go ahead, Soja.
Thanks so much. I just want to say a few words. I deeply appreciate, not everyone who just came and spoke today, but everyone who's engaged on this issue. I know this is kind of just the tip of the iceberg in terms of the people who've really been following this. And I know this is something that. Has. Sparked deep interest in the community and I appreciate all the civic engagement. Some time back, I, there's actually kind of a town hall that you all hosted. And I appreciate we were able to have city staff there, which I deeply appreciate that that time. Planning Commissioner unfortunately is at the same time as our council meeting, so that's the only reason why I wasn't there that that evening, but I've continued to stay really engaged. On this particular issue and, and so I appreciate all the input. I also really want to thank the developer here for listening to that public info. That's kind of. Exactly what, what you hope to see. And, you know, want to thank them also for their work and collaborating with our staff to come to what I really see as a win-win-win. For, for the project and the property to get a higher, better use for, for staff and. What we're working on to support the entire community and for the residents, for all of you who've come and spoken today. So I'll be strongly supporting the recommendation. I know this is just an initial first step and, you know, we're, we're gonna. The, the, the project will follow its, its, its own process, but I think this is a great step for, for the community. Again, thank you to all the residents for, for coming out. And looking forward to seeing us continue to make progress on this.
Just take a brief comment. In the past few years, the state of California has enacted a number of rules which preclude the city. From having the freedom and the negotiating that we used to have under California state law. So because of the density requirements, the state, there are a number of. Rules which actually prevent us from. From having a great deal of authority over the actual density of a number of these projects.
Yeah, just wanted to thank, you know, the entire team, all of staff that was working on this compromise. I think it's, that's what it is. It's a nice compromise. I think that. We're getting mostly what we want ultimately, a lot of money for affordable housing. We're. A lot of units. I mean, I think everyone knows we're in a housing crisis statewide and this is going to do a lot towards helping our own city and. You know, getting out of it. And so, yeah, that's about all I have to say.
So I'm going to support the staff recommendation. I feel that the. City staff and the applicant developer have worked together to come to a reasonable agreement. It's going to benefit both them and. The city as well as the residents of the mobile home park. And I would encourage going forward that the dialogue remain open and consistent and that you be willing to, the applicant be willing to listen to, to the concerns of the neighbors because. In the history of our city, that's really when we have the best developments, when we have. Good partnership between the developer and the residents. So thank you for your willingness to, to work with the city so far.
And I would like to add to everything that all the council members said. I think it's great how many of you have turned out here tonight. We heard you, we've listened. I think the developer has heard you and listened. One of the gentlemen talked about where the taller buildings are, that they're not right up against the mobile home park fence. The developer, I think, has done a good job in being sensitive to the surroundings. I moved here in Campbell and went to the drive-in once before it closed. I watched the tech park being built and the unfortunate part was it, it wasn't really successful in there. It was isolated. That just never attracted the technology companies that we really had thought it would. And so, and I think this is to the benefit of everybody. The developer and the tech park owners are going to be better utilized. I think the number that was selected of the two hundred and ninety units is very appropriate. I actually live on Curtner, so I experience all the traffic and all the issues. The fact that there's no sidewalks on McClintzy. So I, I'm very supportive of this. I think it's wonderful that we're getting two point five million dollars towards our housing fund. We need housing, we need low-income housing and very low-income housing and two point five million dollars is going to go a long way. So thank you to the developer for your plans and as Rob stated, we are not approving the design tonight. You guys still work with staff on that, but we are approving. We will be voting on moving this forward as a successor agency. So thank you all for speaking and coming tonight. And at that, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation as both the city council and the successor agency.
Second. And that includes.
Yes, with the desk item.
Yes. So we have a motion and the second roll call.
Could I, I asked for clarification from the city attorney on the. Resolution bill. It's. Now for be resolved with the city council approved the agreement. Shouldn't it be the city council slash successor agency?
Correct. City council acting as the council and successor agents.
And so the resolution should reflect that. On page, packet page.
Are you looking at the new resolution?
Oh, I didn't look at the new.
The new resolution, Exhibit A one does state, city of Campbell and the successor agency of the city of Campbell redevelopment.
Right, but I'm referring to the now therefore be resolved and the roll call. House and adopted, it just says council member. Should it say? Council successor agency members, just to be practically correct.
I, I think that would be a good clarification.
So is that the whereas the post amendment to the DDA? Is that the.
The now wherefore be it resolved clause would now be, now therefore be it dissolved if the city council slash successor agency. Approves the agreement to amend. The November eighteenth nineteen ninety-seven first amended restated disposition and development agreement that set forth in Exhibit A. And authorize the city manager to.
So we need to amend the motion. To improve, modify and add the language to the.
I would amend my motion to make sure that the resolution includes that language I just read by the city attorney.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just want to make sure when the resolution gets, gets conformed that it's the correct wording. And the second.
Yeah, happy to say, and nice catch. One of the many reasons I'm happy around council.
Okay, so now we'll have a roll call.
Council member Bybee.
Hi.
Council member Fertato.
Hi.
Council member Schizola.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Hi.
Mayor Landry.
All right, and I'll let you guys clap now if you want. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is new business. I'll give you a minute to leave the room. You are welcome to stay if you want. Okay, ready? All right. We're on item number thirteen, a designation of a voting delegate and alternate for the twenty twenty-four League of California Cities Annual Conference. And we have our city clerk Andrea Sanders presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We're here this evening so that you can designate. One voting delegate and one alternate to the League of California Cities Annual Conference General Business Meeting. This year's meeting will be held on October eighteenth and is in Long Beach. The, consistent with Cal City bylaws, the council is required to designate a delegate and alternate. Last year's voting delegate was council member Fertato and Vice Mayor Lopez was the alternate. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I am attending the meeting in Long Beach.
You are a delegate?
No, I am attending the meeting. I'm eligible to be the delegate if any ask.
Okay, so regardless you're attending.
You might be attending.
Okay. Any other council comments? Open it to the public. If there's anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item, please come forward. I see none, so I return it back to council for discussion. So who wants to volunteer or? But Dan, you.
I'm unable to make it that day. I just want to.
Dan, you are.
Yeah, I'm.
You could be the voting delegate.
I've already registered.
Okay, and do we have an alternate? Elliot? Anne, are you in? Anne, no?
I hadn't really given it much thought, to be honest.
Yeah, I'm unable to.
I assumed that you would be going as mayor.
It's going to be really hard for me to go that weekend. I already had some other personal engagements that I need to go to. Do we have to have an alternate or just the? Voting delegate?
I don't think that it's required that you have an alternate. You definitely need the delegate, but. The, the bylaws, you say up to two alternates, so that makes me think that maybe it's not a requirement. I'm just looking at their voting guidelines really quickly.
I don't think you're required to have an alternate. It's just in case your voting delegate can't make it, but if he can't make it, then we won't have.
So I, I mean, I'd be willing to volunteer to be the alternate, but I would need to double-check my schedule and I haven't done that, so. I, I don't think there's any harm in listing me as an alternate and if I don't go, it's not the end of the world, right?
Well, now, I was going to say the same thing. I, but like I said, I do have a personal engagement that would be difficult to change, so if Ann would be willing, that would be wonderful. All right, so we have Dan as our voting delegate and Anne as our alternate. Would someone like to make a motion?
I, I vote that we, is it nominate?
Does the city.
That we designate Councilor Fertato as the delegate.
Voting delegate.
Voting delegate to the League of Cities and Councilmember Bybee as the alter.
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call.
I.
Council member Bybee. Council member Bybee.
Hi.
Council member Fertato. Council member Schizola.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Hi.
Mayor Landry.
It just shows Anne's enthusiasm for the item. Jumps, jumps ahead. All right, that motion passes. Thank you. Next is unfinished business, which we have none and item fourteen is council committee reports. Anne, would you like to start?
I have no report tonight.
Dan?
Thank you. I have a couple items to report. I attended the recent meeting of the Santa Clara County Emergency Operational Area Council. And while we heard several reports, there are a couple of things I'd just like to call to your attention for information. I, I wanted to advise you that for the month of July, as this report was written actually on July twenty-fourth, so there were some additional days, but as of the twenty-fourth of July. The county medical examiner's office investigated twenty-eight potential heat-related deaths in the county during the month of July only. Fourteen of those victims were over age sixty-five and eight were vic, eight of those victims were unhoused. So heat is quite a problem and the fact that we sponsor cooling centers, I think is very important and just. I was kind of surprised that just for less than one month in the county, there were that many heat-related deaths that occurred, so. Just wanted to call that to your attention. The second item I wanted to. Mention to you was the fact that. As you probably know or may know, Anderson Dam, one of, well, the largest dam in the Santa Clara Valley Water District inventory, there are ten reservoirs. In the, in the valley and Anderson Dam is by. Leaps and bounds, the largest dam that we have within the county. And it has about ninety thousand acre feet. Of water, so it was built actually in nineteen fifty and. During that time, the seismic requirements have changed. And so it turns out that the dam no longer meets seismic requirements. So the Santa Clara Valley Water District decided that it would need to make a major revision and rebuild the dam. And they made that decision way back in twenty twelve and began the planning for that process. The. Planning. And the design and the permitting actually took from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-five, so it's taken a long time. The permitting also still requires a rather onerous process to go through with the federal. Energy and Regulatory Commission as well. And, but one of the first steps was to build a new outlet tunnel so that the dam can be lowered. So that the work can be done on it while the water is minimal. And FERC has decided that three percent is the maximum that the water level can be during this time. So from. Twenty twenty-one till now, the new tunnel has been worked on. It's almost built. And it will be able to serve as the outlet. Vector or pipeline in order to keep the dam levels low while this construction takes place. The seismic. Retrofit is actually going to take several years. It's determined to start in twenty twenty-five and it's predicted to conclude by twenty thirty-two. And presumably at that time, then this dam will be able to withstand a seven point two five earthquake. Which is supposed to be the largest earthquake that is possible, if you will, and the Calaveras Fault because the dam parallels the Calaveras Fault. And so it will be much safer. It is, however, very expensive, one point two billion dollars. And so it's a very big project and I just thought I'd sort of call it to your attention. In the meantime, during the winter months, the water district will be working very carefully to try to maintain the low levels in the dam and divert the water through other channels and through this tunnel that I mentioned to keep the levels low, but yet sort of prevent flooding from the water that they have to discharge all during that time. So this is the two items I wanted to report. That's it.
Do you have any reports?
Nothing for now, yep.
Back at you.
I actually have no meetings to report either.
October, or October, August was vacation month for a lot of our committees, so I did attend the Universal Oneness Day last Sunday. We had speakers that came to the last meeting to invite us. I felt quite honored. I was the honored guest, and it was interesting. They couldn't find much information about me, so they read my campaign statement from 2016, which I had forgotten. So it was very pleasant. They had a lot of nice little activities. There was a tying ceremony, and they, a bunch of kids tied friendship bracelets, and then they were tying them to tie everybody together to represent Universal Oneness Day. So that was very nice. And that was the only thing I attended, and if nothing else, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.